I'd like to call the Hinkley Township Zoning Commission organizational meeting to order at January 5th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. The purpose of this organizational meeting is to elect officers, set the day and time of all regular monthly meetings and to address other items of procedure. This meeting is being taped for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Judy's not here, so I'll go ahead and do roll. Fisher here, Crew.
Yeah.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manly.
Here.
Ingleman.
Here.
Trustee Augustine and trustee Ashrell are attending. And trustee Sweattick is virtual. Please go ahead. We have a new member for the full voting member this year, so that's Cindy Ingleman, so she's going to be given an oath of office.
Okay, so may I have you raise your hand? We're gonna change, I state your name.
Hi, Cindy Ingleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowllly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a zoning commission.
Of a zoning commission.
Member.
Member.
For the Hinkley Township.
For the Hinkley Township.
Madina County.
And the county.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my term.
During my term.
Congratulations.
So Ms. Ingleman has been appointed for a five-year term. We currently do not have any alternates. I think the trustees are still working on that. They'll be conducting interviews again, my understanding. Have you determined the time yet for that or is the window open?
But we want to see how many applications we get in. The deadline for applicants is the 13th of January at noon.
Perfect. January 13th at noon is the deadline for any applicants if they're interested in being an alternate on our zoning commission. Perfect. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the chair.
I move that nominate Marcus Fisher for a second term.
I'll accept. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Crew. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Crew for chair.
I decline. Thanks Cindy, but I decline.
Well, I heard you say once you'd be interested, so I thought I'd.
I did? You. But thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll do a call, a roll call. Fisher, I'll abstain. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
All right. I will remain as chair. I'd like to call for nominations for the vice chair position.
Nominate Michelle Crew for a second term as vice chair of zoning commission at Hinkley Township.
Ms. Crew?
If there's anyone else that wants it, I'm, I'm okay with that. I will accept it, but if anybody else wants it, that's fine. I'm not.
Well, I would make a nomination for Matt Marzullo as chair.
Mr. Marzullo?
Uh, in the interest of not making it too complicated, I appreciate it, but I'll say, uh, I'll abstain on this one.
Okay.
So we have a nomination for Crew. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Marzullo.
I was gonna second you.
But you didn't.
Are there any other nominations? All right, then we'll do a roll call. Fisher, yes. Crew?
I'm not gonna abstain for yourself.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Perfect. Crew has been voted in as our vice chair for a second term. Congratulations. We'll now go through our organizational minutes. I sent you guys a marked up copy of proposed changes. Feel free to jump in at any time. If you have any questions or concerns, I have a couple of things that I'll point out as we go along. But otherwise, I'll just read them and then we'll do a roll for each one. All meetings will be open to the general public advertised per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code. Any interested party may request a notice of any regular or special meeting of the zoning commission by sending such requests to the zoning clerk and including self-addressed stamped envelope. Any interested party also has the option to provide an email address and request notification through email distribution. I'd like to make a motion for the following. The regular monthly meeting will be the first Thursday of the month and will be called to order at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Manly?
Second.
Seconded by Ingleman. We'll do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion's been approved. Special meetings and work sessions will be scheduled as needed by consensus motion of the zoning commission or at the discretion of the chair and advertised per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Would we be able to amend that to as near by majority or quorum of motion? Does that have consensus?
By majority?
Yeah. Cause I think there have been occasions where we were gonna have a special meeting and one person wasn't able to be there and we just said, we have to get it in.
That's true. Yeah.
We're going to change consensus to majority.
And if that's amenable to everyone, I'd like to move that we approve it.
As amended. Moved by Marzullo, seconded by Ingleman. Do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Public hearings will be scheduled as needed and advertised per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code. I'll make the motion myself.
Okay.
Seconded by Crew?
Yes.
Roll.
Anyone say no?
I don't know why we specify call for roll on each one, but we.
I know, I know.
Uh, Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion's been approved. Procedures for various business, various meeting business matters set by the motion of the new chair. The chair moves to adopt the following procedures. All zoning commission meetings will be electronically recorded for transcription purposes. To have minutes of the regular monthly meetings and any other meeting physically mailed or electronically mailed to all members of the zoning commission so as to be received at least one week prior to the next regular monthly meeting. I know we generally don't obtain, don't achieve that. That's our goal. Judy, who is our recording secretary, has indicated that one of her New Year's resolutions is to try to hopefully provide those a little sooner to us, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I.
So moved.
Yeah.
Moved.
Second.
Marzullo, seconded by Crew.
I just really do want those minutes earlier.
And it's tough on when we're quickly editing them and getting them out on.
The night before?
Yes. Okay. Roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
I will say however, Judy does a fantastic job in her preparation of the minutes and the detail of which she records. Thanks. I absolutely appreciate that. All business matters, all new business matters other than proposed amendments to the zoning resolution or zoning map to be considered at a regular monthly meeting are to be received by the zoning office no later than the 22nd of the previous month. For site plan reviews pursuant to chapter 11, the plan must be reviewed by the zoning inspector and certified for meeting and certified for meeting all submission requirements and then submitted to the zoning commission no later than the 22nd of the previous month. I want to stop and have a little bit of a discussion on this one.
Yeah.
So in our book, we for the, we allow for informal submission prior to a preliminary site plan review. For that, we specify that it needs to be in by the 22nd of the month. For this, for a preliminary and a final site plan, as far as I can tell, the book doesn't specify when. The prior organizational minutes had it as the 10th of the month, and I'm actually recommending we go back to the 10th and keep it at the 10th. Primarily because when you do a primary preliminary site plan review and a final site plan review, they need to be sent to agencies for review prior to us having our review. So they go to the fire department. Sometimes it's this sanitary department. It just depends on what agencies, the police department. They all need to review it and provide comments before we can do our final site plan. So if we don't receive it until the 22nd of the month, we might not have enough time to get that through by our by our meeting to get those comments back. So I recommend keeping it the 10th and just recognizing that for informal submissions prior to preliminary site plans, those are the 22nd of the month, but we don't specify anything about those within this text language.
Can I ask, what is cert exactly certified? That all the boxes are check yes on that list?
Correct.
I mean, it's not like a sworn affidavit or anything.
No, no, no.
Oh. Who, did somebody make a suggestion to move it back to the 22nd or was that something from zoning inspector?
Sure, that originally came from the zoning department, then I just had a conversation with them about this to figure out why this, this flag happened. And they were just flagging because of the distinction, because our book for one thing identifies it as the, the 22nd, but they also would prefer it to stay the 10th. It was just a flag, and so that's why.
Okay, and you're suggesting not to strike out the 10th, leave the 10th?
Correct. So instead of saying the 22nd of the month, it will just remain as the 10th of the month.
And then we're gonna have to update the book as well.
No, but the book only specifies with respect to that informal, which is not one.
And I think we actually moved the informal to the 22nd from the 10th because it gave the residents more time to have a timely turnover. I like the final being on the 10th personally because all that stuff gets mailed out to us and it gives us plenty of time then to then review before our meeting.
Yeah, I concur.
Personally.
I agree. So we're all in favor of amending it to the 10th, maintaining it to the 10th. Perfect. Can someone make a motion?
Well. Okay, you stopped. Did you want to continue with the rest of it?
Yes. For proposed amendments to the zoning resolution or zoning map, the applicant should request to be placed on the agenda no later than the, we'll figure it out, of the previous month, the applicant at a regular meeting must submit and file the proposed amendments in person due to time limits prescribed in the Ohio Revised Code. So this is when there's an applicant initiated a zoning amendment or map amendment. So for instance, when the school property came in, they had to make a submission, but their official submission didn't occur until our meeting because that's what sets the time. But in order for them to get on our agenda, they have to notify us by some point. I think that that can remain as the 22nd or that can be the 22nd because they're really not submitting anything to us. There's no agency review prior to that. So I would suggest allowing as much opportunity for the public to submit things as opposed to having an onerous timeframe.
I, so on that one, I actually kind of disagree with that because we need to make a, advertise it to the public about the map or resolution amendment.
This is just the receipt. Remember that the receipt of the application comes at our meeting and then we set a public hearing and that's what would be advertised. Then it goes to the zoning, the, the planning commission. So this is just so that.
Just to actually hand in the, hey, I want to be on the agenda for.
Okay, put me on the agenda. Okay, that's it.
Got it.
So we're okay with the 22nd of the month? And I think that, that date just makes sense because we also have something else. It's 20 seconds. We'll keep it as two dates, the 10th of the 22nd as our submission dates. All right, I'll entertain.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Also seconded by Marzullo.
Roll. Fisher, yes.
Yes.
Crew, yes.
Yes.
Marzullo, Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yep.
Thank you. Zoning commission members with expiring terms need to notify the board of trustees in writing, email is acceptable, of their interest to serve as a zoning commission member by November 15th.
Who is that this year? I think it might be me.
Think it is you. We looked it up. You have until November 15th to figure out whether it's you or not.
I think it is.
I think it is. I think it's you and then Manly and then myself.
Oh, no. What, what, what is the, I, I, we, we do this literally every year at this meeting. So it's me this year and then who's after me? It's Crew, right? Manly, Fisher, Ingleman?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to get that out before we moved on.
Perfect.
Maybe sit in order. Still moved.
People tell me I'm number one.
Moved by Crew?
Second.
Seconded by Marzullo. We'll do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion's been approved. The participation of a zoning commission member who is designated to represent the zoning commission will be by request of the chair and approval by the township liaison on an as needed basis. This will be based on purpose, subject matter, and availability.
What, what's the purpose of the change on the chairman? Doing this at a public meeting?
What, did I make an editor? What do you mean, what's the?
The trustees asked for this, that they want the final say so.
This is the same. I didn't make an edit. On item six?
Right. It used to be, didn't it used to be the zoning chair?
It's still, it says, will be by request of the chair and approval by the trustee liaison. And I think the reason that there's approval of a trustee is because of the they, they, they get their $35 or whatever it is for a meeting. So that's why there's an approval, but that was not amended. That, that was also in the.
I didn't go back and check.
2022 organizational.
I think you're thinking about number seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I also think I, back, I think Chris was the chair, but he attended some of those things. So maybe that's the thought process.
I, I, I think we're talking about two different things here. Specifically, when we're talking about zoning commission member to represent the zoning commission is more at a BZA meeting.
Correct.
Whereas number seven, we're talking about Medina County planning, which again is still going to be someone that's, we all say, all right, let's have this person do it, but inevitably it falls to the chair.
Correct.
Like I.
So why don't you?
Example, example being, I think for BZA, one time we had Bruce represent or someone represented the commission at the BZA about a specific topic. I want to say it was outdoor boilers or something along those lines. And I think it was Bruce. My mind could be playing tricks on me too. Because he happened to have a lot of information about.
That sounds like a topic.
Yeah.
Bruce would be.
That, that he was very involved with. And then meanwhile, you might have someone who has a proclivity towards solar and 350 solar light or 350 Hinkley light representation at one of their meetings and just so that we can send a, an SME, a subject matter expert if we need to.
That's right.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion myself for item six. Is there any second? Seconded by Manly. Let's do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
A member shall be appointed to attend the Medina County Planning Commission meetings due to a filing from Hinkley. I, I think the only amendments that I made here is I changed, changed to make a sentence structure and I changed it from when required by to due to because there's no requirement that anyone ever attend a planning, planning commission meeting. In fact, I think that our township is one of the only ones that generally sends a person from the zoning commission to these meetings. But, so I, I just got rid of the requirement and just said due to a filing. So at this time, I'll call for nominations for representative or volunteer.
Can I make a recommendation?
Go ahead.
Of perhaps not having a nomination or representative so much as amending it to having someone show up. It doesn't have to be the same person every month.
Yeah.
Um, I think it, it places an undue burden on whoever ends up being appointed or voluntold as the chair usually is.
So we don't want to appoint? We would like to member selected to attend?
I, I think if, if we not necessarily mirror, but get a little bit more close to number six of, hey, we're, we're going to designate a member at the previous meeting.
So a member shall be designated? A member shall be designated to attend the filing. Yeah, we don't say designation versus appointment. We don't say unless.
I mean, it's neither, neither here nor there, but I, I, I think the nominations to have just a sole representative.
I am perfect.
I don't think there's anything that requires us to do that in the ORC.
No. As I said, most townships do not have any representative from the planning commission attend.
Could, could we adjust it to where we do it on a monthly basis when there's something, because we always know when our hearings are.
Before.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to say.
To attend.
And who's, who's available and you know, time schedules, things change and also interests change.
We'll just say, so I'll amend it to say a member shall be designated to attend the Medina County Planning Commission meetings due to a filing from Hinkley as a I, I want to change.
When required, when necessary.
A member shall attend as designated by zoning commission. So I amended a little bit. A member shall attend the Medina Planning Commission meetings due to a filing from Hinkley as designated by the zoning commission.
Okay. We're at a previous meeting, at the prior meeting, so that we stipulate a timeframe.
Perfect. A member shall attend the Medina Planning, the Medina County Planning Commission meetings due to a filing from Hinkley as designated by the zoning commission at a prior meeting.
Public, how about prior public meeting? This is on the record.
You just like the alliteration. All right, so prior public meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Some have moved by Marzullo.
Second.
Seconded by Ingleman. Do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Public records policies. A zoning commission email address shall be established for each member and alternate. I think everyone here has that email address established. I'll go. I'll make a motion.
I'll, no.
Would you like to second?
I'll second it, sure.
Seconded by Ingleman. I'll do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion's been approved. Procedures under chapter 11, allowing the zoning commission to hire a third-party consultant. A third-party consultant will be utilized as needed. For example, a third-party consultant may be utilized for site plan reviews or when deemed necessary by the chair or by a majority vote of the zoning commission. The chair will work with the trustee liaison to identify and engage prospective consultants and the duties of the consultant, which may include, but is not limited to, the following. Review of a preliminary and/or final site plan for compliance with the zoning resolution. Review of preliminary and/or final site plan for compliance with the Hinkley Township zoning code. Attendance at a preliminary or final site plan review or reviews, attendance at site visit, recommendations of improvements to the zoning resolution. I want to make sure there's no mistake because this first two are identical. Yeah. That's because, okay, so what happened is there was an item below it that said review and a final site plan. And I moved it up to keep all the final site plans and preliminary together and, but there was a duplicate in our prior code and so it's still here. So I'll remove the one. There was also confusion because we also have attendance at, in our final site plan reviews or review. Let's see. We had, in our last organizational minutes, we had attendance at any preliminary or final site review and that seemed redundant as well. So that's why I changed that one to site visit because I think by site review, they meant site visit. Not that we generally do those, but so I'll read them again and then you can let me know if there's any issues.
So you're saying to keep both three and four?
I'm.
I'm, I know you.
So one and two.
Strike.
Were, were basically identical.
Right.
So I'm striking one and then two, three, four, and five will keep. Two is
Yeah.
Is the review.
Right.
Of the final site plan.
Yeah.
Two is attendance at the site plan review. Three is attendance at a site visit. And four is recommendations and improvements to the zoning resolution.
So your new number one, should we have zoning resolutions or zoning code?
Yes. We should, I should have just struck there too. That's fine.
Well, one has Hinkley Township in it and the other one does.
With, yeah, we don't, I don't think anywhere in.
So that's more correct.
So zoning resolution. All right, I'll read all four of those again. Review of preliminary, preliminary and/or final site plan for compliance with the zoning resolution. Attendance at any preliminary or final site plan review or reviews. Attendance at site visit and recommendations of improvements to the zoning resolution. I'll initiate a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Manly?
Second.
Seconded by Crew. Do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Length of regular meetings. Meetings, which can include regular meetings, special meetings, work sessions, public hearings, or any combination of those in a given day will be capped at two hours of duration. The zoning commission can choose at that time by motion to extend the meeting by duration set within that motion. Any remaining items on the agenda at the end of a meeting will be rolled over to the next monthly meeting.
I'm good. So moved.
Moved by Crew. I'll second it. We'll do a roll. Fisher, yes.
Crew, yes.
Crew, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Need for community exposure for all members of the zoning commission, voting and alternates. It is strongly, I'll, I'll, I'll move for a motion that it's strongly recommended that each member of the zoning commission attend one planning, one Medina County Planning Commission meeting during the year. Just a recommendation, not a requirement.
Do they do them virtually?
No.
They did during COVID.
Oh, I'll, I'll motion.
Motion by Marzullo.
I'll second it, but I have a question. Is your attendance on this, would that suffice as your attendance if there's a need for Hinkley? So, okay.
It kind of works well.
Took out.
All right, so seconded by Crew. I'll do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Ingleman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public secondary question for that one. Does that count as the educational piece?
It has not generally counted as educational piece, right? Trustee, you, the trustees are not considering attendance at Medina County Planning Commission meeting. It has not generally counted as educational piece, right, trustee, you you, the trustees are not considering attendance at uh, Medina County Planning Commission meeting as an educational seminar. All right, I'll move for the following, public comments will be reserved for a designated period of time at the end of the meeting unless otherwise recognized by the chair. This was an addition that was added last year, I think it worked well, I don't think we had any issues or a lack of opportunity for the public to comment.
Uh, I have a question, are you? Prior prior to each topic, are you going to, or the chair announced that they will have questions at the end of our discussion of that topic or that they will be deferred to the end of the meeting, so we know in advance on our here.
So I I think what we've generally allowed is.
We've been pretty loosey goosey about this whole thing.
Right, and so it's always just been at the recognition of the chair and I think it's a question of how is our meeting, you know, taking place and what sort of engagement are we seeing? And and when does it make sense to have public comment and when does it not? Uh, I'm I'm more than willing to have more formalized procedure for that. It it's really up to you as to what you would like to see in terms of.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have no problem, but but I we're getting ready to discuss some text change, whatever it is, what does matter? That prior to us topic, you went into that, that you announced that the questions are going to be held at the end of the of this session or at the end of the before we close the meeting tonight, sort of thing. In other words, I'd like to know when, while we're discussing this, when are those questions? When can the public then ask those questions? Am I making, I don't know. You're looking at me like I'm.
No, I think that that certainly makes sense, I'm interested to hear what the what the other members think. Well, sometimes we see hands raised and we, you know, we might not have intended to have a public comment at that moment, but it fits into the discussion and it might change the course of the discussion.
Again, that's how we get in trouble.
Right, it is also.
That we have to know.
Yeah.
What do you mean by get in trouble?
Well, the the meeting gets dragged out because we go through all these questions, so we go to the next topic and some of those first questions then come out and we, you know.
But that's, I mean, I think that's also the purpose of having public meetings, so the public also gets their opportunity.
Purpose of public meeting is it's done in in front of the public, I the thing.
Well.
The thing is, we've had two and a half, three hour meetings, if we could have trimmed some time off if we would probably either put everything to the end or if we would have done it after each section.
I don't disagree that we sometimes get off on tangents or some speakers are maybe a little longer winded than they probably should and we could have set a time limit, you know, I don't think we generally set the time limits, we've let them speak of their mind. And so those are absolutely things that we can consider doing or again, you know, we we do it ad hocly as we've done it before, but I'm happy to announce at the beginning, you know, we're we're going to have these four topics tonight, we'll allow for a public discussion after each one of those topics pertinent to the topic if that's helpful um, or I.
Well, I think certainly if the intent of one of those topics is for this commission to make a decision, want to get the public input prior to us making a decision as opposed to holding it off to the end of the meeting. So um, it may be to structure this to somehow say that we would take public participation for those items that will require some kind of decision. You know, there are things that's going to continue to roll from one month next. You wait till the end of the meeting to take a bunch of comments, but it doesn't help if we make a decision and then somebody comes up to the podium and says, well, gee, you know, you could have done this or, you know, it impacts this, so.
Which ultimately, that that is what ended up happening with um, some of the language for the solar and and um, wind energy sources where we said, all right, you need to have screening and then comments came up after we had already approved everything and now we're like, oh, shoot, now we're going to go back and fix the verbiage. I I I'm not a proponent of reducing the public's accessibility to make comments. And if you make someone who shows up for one subject, wait until the end of the meeting after we go through four other topics to speak, they are not going to stick around in most cases. And I get it, some of the meetings may run long, but they run long, they're also capped at two hours, at two hours, we can say, hey, you know what? Let's punt until next month.
And and I think we've we've generally done that, I think the case in point, you know, text amendments and map amendments generally are are take multiple meetings to to go through anyway. Preliminary site plans, final site plans, those might conclude within a single meeting and we've been very good about allowing the public to come up and have their say prior to any vote on the those those sorts of items, because it's important that we hear what their concerns might be uh, before we we move on it. So I guess this brings us now back full circle. I I'm still okay with the language as it's written and I'll do a better job of chair of trying to identify when public comments will be available throughout the meeting and then still recognize that public comments might come in somewhere else as well, but at least say, hey, we're going to try to have public you know, minutes as each as we address each topic. But if you would like some other formalized language in here, I'm not opposed to that either.
I think what we did this last year was fine, I mean, I just think maybe we have to control the time on speakers, that's it. I think that's more helpful than saying they have to wait at the end of the time, at the end of the meeting to speak, but I think we did a great job by allowing them to speak after the topic and get their input.
So I'd moved uh to approve as they're as they're written here rather than adding limitations.
A motion by Marzullo.
I'll second.
Seconded by crew, do a roll Fisher, yes, crew.
Yes.
Marzullo.
Yes.
Manley.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, Ingleman.
I'm going to say no.
Motion passes. Attendance at zoning commission meetings and educational seminars. Each, and I I think that this is an entirely new section, this was predominantly pulled from BZA, but it just formalizes a bit. So this is all new from our twenty twenty two organizational minutes and I've actually got a few more amendments to make relative to I sent to you. Each member of the zoning commission shall shall sign the sign in sheet to confirm attendance. I'm now amending the next language, if virtual attendance is permitted and a member is attending a meeting virtually, because I think under the current rules of Ohio, we cannot vote virtually, we have to be here in order to vote. So this was a remnant of when there was virtual, I don't think they're going to go back to virtual, but if they are, we're going to say if virtual attendance is permitted and a member is attending a meeting virtually, trustee liaison, chair or recording secretary will confirm will confirm attendance during roll call. Sign in sheet shall be noted virtual next to the member's name and initialed by trustee liaison or chair. Minutes will confirm attendance. If attending an educational seminar or an approved offsite meeting, an attendance slip must be completed and turned in to the zoning secretary to receive compensation. If the chair or member has been designated to attend a board of zoning appeals or trustee meeting, prior approval by the trustee liaison must be given and attendance slip must be completed and turned in to the zoning secretary to receive compensation. Two additional new points, each member shall complete sunshine law training within six months of the member's appointment to the zoning commission and once every five years thereafter. Another new point, each member shall complete one educational seminar per year, provided such seminars are readily available to the member. I can repeat those last two since those are not in your paper. Each member shall complete sunshine training within six months of the member's appointment to the zoning commission and once every five years thereafter, that's just to mirror the trustees organizational meeting minutes which require us to have the sunshinely training within six months, go ahead.
May I interrupt? Our our minutes will read sunshine law training with it within the first six months of each term. Instead of appointment.
Okay.
Alternates will be required to take said training once for every consecutive five years they have been reappointed and I can print this for you if you'd like.
Alternates.
Language. Will be required to take said training once for every consecutive five years. They have been reappointed. That way they're on the same schedule as members.
So this is kind of splitting nerves. But we've had several instances where people are appointed to the a vacant um, term, so they come in halfway. If they come in halfway in, won't they need to do the sunshine sunshine training within that first six months?
First six months of each term, so as soon as they're appointed, that's part of their term.
Okay, so then so then when they, whether it's one, two, five years and then the start of their next five year term, okay.
Good question.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or I'll entertain a motion?
Well, I'll still have to ask my question since I took sunshine training mid-year or so last year as an alternate and I am now starting this position with a new term. Will I need to take sunshine training within the first six months of this year or not?
About this before the meeting, I believe that because you you took it just six months ago, it's not necessary for you to take it again.
Okay.
Um, I can certainly ask the trustees if you want me to make sure and see if they're.
Well, I just, I don't want to be, because I don't really fall under either one of those categories and I don't want to be you know, held accountable for not taking sunshine law, you know, do I take it five years from the time when I took it? I that's why I'm just formally asking, so.
But because you were an alternate and it says once for every five years. You're serving five years. I would assume that it'd be fine, but if you would like me to talk to the other two trustees in the next meeting, just to verify that they are in agreement, I'd be fine to do that.
That's your call, however you want. But I'll just uh, just want to make it so noted.
Perfect.
Thank you. As far as the required training.
The sunshine training or the educational?
Educational. The educational training, uh, you're saying readily available
to the member and that's that was because during COVID, there were periods of time where there was just no educational available. So that's why I said if it's readily available to a member.
And and that's that's also where I'm kind of asking like, okay, readily available um, two times a year, is that considered readily available or something that happens once every month would be considered readily available? Because as you know, I travel a lot, so if it's on a Thursday and there are only two Thursdays in the year that I can actually get that training, then that shell precludes me.
That's why we made concessions this year, so we had um, Medina County Planning Commission come in and do that education, we recorded it.
Yep.
Put it on YouTube and then I emailed it to you and just asked you to answer one question through that you you viewed the video and that was that was.
And that's so it so we'll have different ways, it's not you have to be in one of these locations, one of these two days. Because I know previously before pre-COVID, it was we would go to I think it was a Hilton Garden Inn or something up in in Independence and you just sit there all day, all right. Learn, I mean, you there's a lot of good information you're pulling out of it, but you, when you have limited availability to just be there for a full day, that's complicated.
Yeah, and the world has changed since COVID, we've all felt that. But I know that the Medina County Planning Commission said that their goal next year is to have quarterly trainings. So we may be able to offer more for all of you.
And knock on wood, hopefully we'll be able to have that recorded or just like we did this time.
So great.
So are you okay with the language?
Absolutely, as as long as it it's truly readily.
And that's why I put in that language, I didn't want to make it mandatory and then just not have the available because I understand conflicts of time and.
I moved.
Moved by crew. I'll second it, seconded by Fisher. We'll do a roll Fisher, yes, crew.
Yes.
Marzullo.
Yes.
Manley.
Yes.
Ingleman.
Yes.
Motion passes, I'll call for any additional procedures or additional business. Anyone else have anything to add?
In the future, do we want to go to a voice vote instead of a roll vote?
I'm fine with that.
In, I mean, like all of them.
Yeah, we could have.
Yeah.
Unless someone requests a roll vote and then we'll do a roll vote.
Or even if it's not unanimous, just say, okay, we'll go roll if it's not unanimous.
Perfect. I'll note that for next year. All right, I'll motion to adjourn the organizational meeting at seven forty six PM. Second. Second, I'll motion, so I'll you second, uh, we'll do a roll Fisher, yes, crew.
Yes.
Marzullo, yes, Manley.
Yes.
Ingleman.
Yes.
Your organizational minute is.